I know. Equipment service contract is going to go up because of the record keeping, electronic record keeping, the field bridge and their yearly increases. And we've already talked about that, but I just want to make sure you know about that. That's all the high points Debbie, as far as I noted, other than the obvious, the capital stuff and everything else.
The service contract actually includes the cardiac monitor stuff.
Yeah, cardiac monitor, repair agreements.
Because that's a pretty big job.
Yeah.
And if you get out of there, there's...
Sorry.
I don't want to get out of there. I want to, I want to talk about the overtime issue. Why is it we can't get control on that mic? I mean, it's gone. You know, if you just look at the year, it's jumping by gouts every year. We have not, as I recall, substantially added 24-hour shifts in the last two years.
This year and years previous, if you look at 2009 to now, when you look at 2009 to now, we started with approximately 415,000 back in '09. And if, when we finish 2014, it's going to be around 475.
Yeah, but here's what I'm looking at. 2012, 409.
Yep.
2013, 431.
Yep.
2014 now going to be 470ish.
Something like that.
That's a jump, jump, jump trend. And I'm trying to figure out, why are we seeing that big of a jump? That's like, you know, almost, it's not quite, well, this year will be over 10.
Right.
Fifteen percent.
Not to interrupt you, but in the email I included, there is a summary of what's going on with overtime.
And that's your second item there. It's the operating budget Q.
QRV hours?
Yeah, open that up. I don't know if it's here or not, is it?
I thought it was.
No.
That's not it?
Nope, that's not it.
Sorry.
It is.
Is it?
Keep going. Very bottom EMS overtime or one up? It's a pretty lengthy...
Are you finding the right one, guys?
Oh, that's not...
EMS overtime line item transfer.
Yeah, request.
Which one's that?
It's a Word document.
EMS, got it.
You there Jeff?
It's this one right here.
Chris?
Yeah, yeah, I got it.
No.
I see what you got highlighted. Are you there soon?
Yeah, okay. It's the Word document.
Are you there, okay.
There's another one, though, too.
I don't know whether everybody's there. All right. Everybody's there?
Yep.
Okay, we look and break down 2014. Year-to-date monthly averages by category. You look at holiday vacation, you look at sick, training, status zero, workers' comp, the fair, the fourth. It breaks down monthly averages for 2014. You look at holiday vacation, a month, we're averaging 600 hours of time. You look at sick, approximately 354 and a half hours. You look at training, 259 hours.
That's a monthly average?
That's a monthly average.
For all employees combined?
You look...
For his employees combined.
Right, yeah.
And how many is that?
Forty-five full-time.
Forty-five FTEs.
And 350 hours of sick a month?
Yep, that's, that's an average of year-to-date from January.
How many FTEs? Hang on, how many FTEs?
Forty-five.
Forty-five.
Forty-five?
And we have part-timers in there, too.
That's like a day a month per person.
I mean, they're taking, they're taking almost 13 hours of vacation per person?
You've got to remember how they're scheduled. They are 20, the majority of them are 24-hour people. So when they take off, it's 24 consecutive hours. It's not...
Okay, that's right.
Okay, remember that.
So one vacation day would be our effective equivalent of three.
It's not paid at overtime. Benefit time is never paid at overtime. However, when you take off, Mark...
That makes more sense now.
To backfill that.
How does that compare to 13 and 12?
Uh, I did not...
Are we seeing a big jump or adjustment in there? Because to go from 430 to 480, there's got to be a delta in there somewhere.
We're seeing it from 2012 to now because there were, I think, 2011, and forgive me if I don't have my years exact, but there was a lot of benefit time that was not used. There was a substantial unfunded, uh, what do you call that? There was a lot of benefit time built up that were, was not used.
Accrued liability.
Accrued liability. There was a very large, do you remember that Kristen? Was that 2012? I can't remember the year, but...
It's still there.
It's been growing still.
From 2009 to now, the accrued time has built. And we're seeing now that time being expended because we've had five years to build that. So going back to what I was telling you, Mark, when a person, one person takes off, that's on that 24-hour shift, that's 24 hours we have to cover. Okay? We have the Affordable Care Act to be conscious of as well. We cannot schedule anybody over 29 hours a week.
Unless we offer them health...
Unless we offer them healthcare. So with the folks that are on 24s, when you take off, one hour, it takes me about three hours of backfill to get that filled. And when I say three hours, it's overtime, if part-time is not available. We have deployment of our ambulances that has been set from 2009 to now. And we're not a Monday through Friday type of operation. We're a 24/7. We have 10 trucks. We have set schedules for their deployment. We ebb and flow according to demand. You have less trucks on a night than you do during the day. However, when those trucks are scheduled, we have to have them filled. So it's not easy for us because Public Works or other places, if somebody takes off, you don't have to put them on that backhoe. And I say that respectfully. I'm trying to get a point across. We have to have that truck on the road and we have to have that shift filled.
No, I just, I, I don't begrudge the numbers. I'm just trying to figure out, is there a trend here that we ought to be aware of?
I don't...
Because, you know, from what we've got in our budget document, and I don't have the extra years that you're talking about on the copy of the tier, but, you know, we're seeing a big jump and then another big jump. And one year is an anomaly, two years is concerning, three years is a trend.
I don't see a trend as far as, is there something that we need to be conscious of other than we are hamstrung by the Affordable Care Act? Employees are going to continue to accrue and build benefit time that they will expend. And as that grows and with the way we are structured, like I say, when that person takes off, it is a lot of hours to fill. So we are at the five-year mark when we finish this year. I don't know if you go back to 2009, Mark, I always said, two to five years, we'll know exactly where we're at.
Yeah, I know. I'm just trying to, you know...
Yeah, oh no. And, and I personally, after 2014 and beyond, I think we're going to have a very good idea of where that overtime is going to sit. And with next year's request, I believe that that should carry us without any other deltas or spikes within what we see in overtime. We whittle down the maintenance.
You got my, answered my question Charlie.
How much of it is because we have to pay them the overtime with the two 24-hour shifts?
Benefit time is never expended or paid at an overtime rate.
Because we adjusted all their pay to match the eight-hour thing, so that's not even figured into this?
It is, it is, but let me say this, the, the overtime jump is not reflective of just 24-hour folks. There's other shifts in there, too.
Sure.
However, the greatest amount of folks in our 45 FTEs are 24-hour people, over 50%. Maybe a little under. So yes, that has the greater amount of shifts to cover as those, so that's why the hours are so high. If we were all eights or 12s or so on and so forth, those hours would be reduced, but you would have more people accruing benefit time.
So how often are we using people? I know, was it last year or the year before, we said to try to utilize people that would not be put into overtime to fill the six? How's that work?
We, we do that Jeffrey, but what has hurt us significantly is the Affordable Care mandates. I have a pool of part-time people. We have standing openings for part-time paramedics. We have, we have an open door. If you want to come work for us, apply, interview, and we will hire you.
How many part-time do you have right now?
Uh, we have approximately 80 folks total, Sam. Forty-five of those being full-time and the remainder being part-time. Our greatest demand is paramedics, obviously, and the market is just not there. That has been an ongoing discussion and understanding with the commission. Nurses are the same way, Christie. It's very hard to find and retain paramedics. So with the constraints of the Affordable Care Act, we are using up to the limit and sometimes over, I'm sure, the part-time pool. When we exceed that 29-hour limit in a week's period, we are obligated to offer them benefits. So there is other significant costs that we broach and look over the cliff by doing that. So to maintain the balance of controlling overtime and complying with the Affordable Care Act, it's an extreme challenge of keeping trucks on the road. Either we pay the overtime or we cross the ledge and we start offering part-time folks benefits.
And you currently have five of them that currently go over the 29 hours.
Right. So we, we have crossed that. And there's not an easy answer to give, other than...
So why not hire a couple more people?
We, Jeffrey, we, we have them...
To fill, to cover, essentially to cover...
We have an open-door policy for part-time applicants. It's just, the market is not there to give them. I don't have people kicking in the door to come apply. A paramedic is two years of training. There's only five training entities within the state of Missouri that farms, produces, cultivates paramedics, for lack of a better description. So the market is just not there to find a good carpenter. They're just not out there.
Maybe we need to encourage that in the high schools, that that is a field to go into.
Yeah, we, we do, to the best of our ability, you know, take part in health fairs and career fairs and things like that. But I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but it all falls down to pay and other challenges that we look at every day, not only in my department, but other departments. It's, it's, it's a bitter pill to articulate and try to...
Well, I figured there'd be a lot more people that would be willing to do that. You work two days a week.
Right.
And then, and I'm not, I mean, I say that with all due respect.
Oh, yes, I understand.
Two days a week, but then you can go do whatever else you want to do to supplement your income, which is a lot easier than working your eight-hour shifts.
Our challenge is, we don't have complete 24-hour shifts. We have eights and 12s in there. The market and other ambulance services in districts, they work solid 24s as the fire service. And I'm not comparing ourselves to the fire service, other than how they shift. We have a challenge that only half of what we deploy is 24-hours. So those shifts, as far as a part-time standpoint, the other half is the eight and 12 hours and folks are just not interested in that. When they want to come work part-time, they're looking for that.
So would it benefit us? Because I wasn't an advocate of the 24-hour shifts. I didn't like them, but we did adjust the salary to where it was.
Correct. We have...
So would that, if we changed them, you know, one or two positions maybe to 24-hour, would that help?
I think we need to seriously consider looking at that, just for the simple...
Look at it and give us a proposal if you think it'll help us save some money on overtime.
I will.
Well, it adds overtime.
Well, that, that's just it.
Because every, every, every week, when they work two days, that's eight hours overtime.
They're guaranteed.
Yeah. I, I think interim Jeffrey, what we need to look at is, right now, it's going to be over. We need to understand that. Going into 2015, I've got a request on there that is going to help us in that regard as far as expanding the QRV and expanding our tiered response, converting some of the existing AMN, the existing shift to a 24. We can look at that for 2016 and beyond, but yes, I can give that to you. But keep in mind, it would grow the overtime, but it would reduce the...
Part-time going over.
...part-time going over. And that is our biggest challenge right now, is that. I'm using everything to its maximum capability and I have crossed a barrier with five people, but it, that's where we're at.
And in here, to help you guys through the process, I've attached an organization chart of each department, kind of gives you a visual of what they have currently. I've also attached the actual EMS income and expense. It's a detailed list of all the income that's come in this year so far and a detailed list of all the expenses.
Did you get your lines on there?
Yes, everything as of yesterday. And then a list of all the current employees and what they're currently making and their job titles. I don't really want to go into that here, but, and then...
Well, we're running long, too.
Yeah.
The hierarchy, if I could point that out, is somewhat different. We did restructure the intake and dispatch with a second supervisor, so...
So what he's wanting to, what he has done is he took this one field suit and put it over here in dispatch, and he, he's asking for another field suit. So that's in his request. So that kind of gives you an idea, too.
Let me know when you want me to change lanes.
Uh, you're already running long.
I'm going to switch and change lanes. Let's go to the QRV. The QRV, it is currently deployed at five days a week, eight hours a day, with a field supervisor. Intake and dispatch, we have two suits there, we've got that covered. We're looking at expanding the QRV to seven days, 12 hours a day, coupled with adding a field supervisor. In the field, direct contact with the citizens of the county. I just have the one supervisor. With expanding it to seven 12s, adding the additional supervisor, we've got that Tahoe that takes point on the medical alarms, a lot of the responses that necessarily does not need an ambulance response. With expanding that QRV to the seven 12s, them taking more of a lead in mitigating those unnecessary responses, a tiered response. Are you keeping up or are we okay? That can keep other ambulances in service, keep them on calls that...
So you want to add a new supervisor? That's the gist of what you're saying.
Bottom line, yes.
Okay.
And that letter right there is to back that up, as far as what he's requesting.
And is that in your budget?
Yes.
Yes.
As proposed to us?
Yes.
And there's no pay raise in that budget, right?
I did not put one in there.
Right, because we, yeah, I mean, I just want to make sure. So what I'm, what we're looking at here includes the additional position?
Yes. And then also, I've got a transfer form in there that...
Oh, because you want to do it now?
Yes.
Oh, that's just the overtime transfer.
Yes, yeah. No, as far as the suit and everything else, we can handle that out of 2015, but the overtime, I do need that.
And it shows that the estimated contingency at the year-end in the enterprise fund is going to be 680. Yes?
That's estimated.
So we're going to run a slight operational deficit this year? In the, in the enterprise fund?
No, they're only saying keep 380,000. I think I put that to the side.
Okay, that's not what I said.
Oh, what?
We're running a slight operational deficit. Last year, our, what's column F? Our budget estimated that we would have 772,000 left over. We're going to be 681. So we're a little bit below, it'll push, this year, we're going to be a little bit below budget. I guess we're actually running a slight operational surplus, aren't we?
It just depends...
Because last year, we finished at 633, my bad.
Oh, okay.
Just depends what carry forward is.
No.
But there's a lot of estimations there that...
Where's the actual carry forward? Where's that at?
Top of the...
Oh, in the top?
Yeah, the revenue side.
G, is it G?
It's line 28, cash flow.
Line 28, but what column?
Um, I.
I.
The highlight.
Okay, so we're kind of staying in the same ballpark here. We're not really running a deficit.
Little, yeah.
It's about the same.
We are actually using more money in this budget right now to transfer over from the sales tax fund than we did the year before, which the year before, to me, that's what we need to look at, is we're transferring over, to make this balance right now, 1.1. Last year, we were 1.159 and last year, we were at 1.104.
That's got to stop. Because I'll drain out the...
Yeah, that's...
I understand, yeah.
So where's the end?
2015. That's what I'm telling you.
I think adding that other person there bumped that up to where we needed more money, but it all depends on the end, cash forward, you know, what we can do. Fortunately, we have to decide before then. I'm estimating the cash forward at 700,000.
Okay. It's just down by almost 100, 82,000 from last year.
And I'm sure I'm more conservative.
And, and with a larger transfer in on top of it. So we're squeezing on both ends. That's not a good sign.
Yeah. So the one last thing out of the enterprise fund, I asked to come up with capital that would come out of the capital account, obviously. That's his list right here for EMS capital requests. And I just want you to see that, because we'll talk about the sales tax fund. And if you have any questions for Mike on this. He's, um, capital, he's thinking two ambulances, just the remount.
And I've got a question for that. Do I need to include that every year or is it understood that we do two a year?
It needs to be included every year. 90,000 for remount? We only saved 20 grand by remounting?
No, it's, uh, it's 50...
We saved 60-something.
Yeah.
What did our last one cost?
It's like 140, 145.
135?
Yeah, we're saving about...
45,000?
Yeah, 90,000, probably.
So I want to talk about the ambulance cots and mounting upgrades. So what is that?
The current structure that maintains and holds an ambulance cot in an ambulance, 2015 and beyond, they're recommending changes to that to update it retention system. It all goes down to NHTSA and recommendations for how the cot is secured in the ambulance. In 2015 and in full effect in 2016, they're making changes to the triple K specs that oversee ambulance cot retentions in ambulances. We're trying to stay ahead of that and we're phasing in the mounting systems for the existing ambulances and any new ambulances we get. The two cots that will work in conjunction with that are power cots. This reduces the workload for the employees when we run into bariatric patients.
So they're mechanical, basically?
The cots?
Yes.
Yeah, they're, they're, I don't want, they're dewalted. You've got a button that makes it go up, you've got a button that makes it go down.
And so that cot's not interchangeable to another unit that doesn't have the same retention system?
Uh, no.
So this is to do all of them?
Yes. Not all the cots, but all the mounting system.
Well, but I thought you just said that certain cots wouldn't go with the retention system.
Not all the power cots, but the retention system will, will be all the ambulances.
And the retention system will take a standard cot?
Yes.
And so what is this price for?
This price is for the current retention system and two bariatric cots.
Why two?
Uh, because the expense of the cots are substantial and I would rather take a phased-in approach. We have time to do that and I, I don't recommend doing it all at once.
Well, I guess my concern there is, is that when you need assistance for a bariatric cot or, or whatever, it's going to be in the other unit and so you're not going to have it. And that's typically the way it is. When you need a piece of equipment or a tool, it's in somebody else's truck.
You have the fire department there to upload it.
Well, I just, I mean, it's just, it's just a big number and, I mean, I understand, you know, one work comp accident, you know, probably cost us a whole lot more than $118,000, but...
The power cots, yeah, the power cots themselves are about 35,000, looking at the monitors as well that we have above it and the power cots, trying to maintain a healthy balance and keeping up with all the changes and necessities where we need them.
So the bulk of...
Prioritizing them.
The bulk of that cot is the two cots, or the cost? Bulk of that cost is two cots for $70,000?
Correct, sir.
If we replace, if we put one in every one, that'd be...
Substantial.
$350,000, 10.
Substantial.
Mike, is there any value to the cots we currently have, if we would sell them or freeze them in or anything?
Take them to New World, and I say that respectfully. Take, yeah, I mean, yeah, cots are in horrible, high-use equipment and there's just no trade-in. The monitors, there is a value for the trade-in on the monitors that...
Can you put them in the bedrooms out there and make them use them?
And Mike, let's see, remind me again, we got eight? Eight, fully operational, two in reserve, that's our 10?
We, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
How many of those eight are 24/7/365s?
Let me back up. We have 12 total.
Okay.
We, we hold back two for remount purposes. The eight and 10, you're correct.
Okay, so we have four held back, two to remount, two in reserve.
Two in reserve, for maintenance mechanics.
So we have eight that are operational?
Correct.
For lack of a better term?
Yes.
Um, how many of those are 24/7/365s?
All eight.
All eight?
Yeah.
So the one, I thought the one we ran out of the, out of the jail was not a 24/7/365?
Oh, forgive me, forgive me. Uh, we have three. We have South Ridge, we have Brazito, and we have Apache Flax.
And I would suggest what we do is get bariatric cots for those three.
Okay.
So that at least all of the ones that are on 24/7, 365, have a bariatric cot.
Just keep in mind, just to update you here on the fly, that would just increase it to about 100 and...
53,000.
I mean, what's, what's that fund at right now, Debbie?
We're not proving it today. We're talking about it. We're just chatting about it.
We're massage, you know?
But, but I think there's...
This is another proposal to do the three 24-hour, seven, 24/7.
I just think it makes sense if you're going to do it, to have it on the three 24s.
Makes sense, but I want to sit down and take the pencil and eraser.
Well, and we need to... What does that other account have in it?
Well, I kind of, it's coming down because of the remount.
Well, I understand that, but what's, what's the balance? I couldn't find it.
Big choke.
It's not under EMS.
No, I couldn't, they're under yours.
Oh, okay. That would account for why I couldn't find it under EMS.
Have to put in about 154,000, roughly, gentlemen.
Ah, here we go.
Changing lanes again, the monitor replacement. Uh, any questions on that? That's a bit self-explanatory.
I'm saying 700,000 carry forward. Sorry.
So you're seeing the same carry forward in both of them?
Yeah. Which went down from a million and eight.
Well, that's because we spent it all.
Are you okay, Sam?
Yeah.
I mean, it, these are all, I don't know. It would be so much better if we could do a little bit of this every year. It seems like we're just doing these big chunks all the time. And same way with the radio system, you know, that was, that was a big chunk and if, I don't know if we could get more proactive and try to have a little bit of this budgeted each year or something to upgrade these, rather than trying to upgrade them all at once. And maybe that's just not possible, I don't know.
I think the situation we got into was saving enough money back for the building.
So, like on his priority capital, the two ambulants, that is part of that?
Right.
The LP twelve monitor replacement, he's doing it in tubes sets?
Correct.
Five and five.
I heated your vice, uh, some weeks ago and, and.
Same for the bariatric cots.
Right.
So, I mean, we are seeing them in a phased approach as opposed to just whack, they're just expensive.
Yep.
Even in phases, they're expensive.
The, these are large ticket items. Uh, we go back to two thousand nine, our greatest challenge was the fleet. We are five years into it, we have replaced the fleet. We now segue to the next priority, which is the monitors. We're going to phase those in over two years. We will have that taken care of for the next five to, to eight years with that. Then we segue and triage and prioritize our way down to the cots and everything else. So, yes, but two thousand nine to now, we whittled the trucks down, we have expanded the living arrangements. We have a lot of big-ticket items here that we're seeing in twenty fifteen through approximately twenty eighteen that when we cross that, there, there's going to be ebb and flow. Uh, can you, uh, make early payments or save up money toward keeping up with technology? Yes, but, uh, technology grows and leaps and bounds that sometimes you're having a hard time keeping up with it. So, there, there are a multitude of strategies to follow, but specifically with the monitors and the cots, we're phasing that in and not doing it all at once.
So, back to labor and overtime.
Yes.
I know we, we do the fair, we do salute to America. We also have ambulances at football games and other sporting events.
Mutual aid.
I mean, yes. How, how much of that do we bill, are we billing anybody for being there?
To be direct, we will, as far as what it, the actual direct cost is when we roll on things like that, can we bill that a hundred percent back? No, we, we can't. Do we bill for some of that? Yes, we do. But can I send somebody a ten thousand dollar bill for a mutual aid response to cover every expense that we've incurred, tire wear, oil, fuel, wage, everything else? We can do that, but I don't think we're going to see much of a recoup from that. And I say that respectfully and I'm not trying to be facetious, but yes, we do have a charge in there, but it's not enough to recoup our direct costs at all.
I mean, I think when we keep looking, seeing these jumps and, and overtime, um, we have to start looking at things that we're doing that we're not recouping our costs and, and, uh, you know, when we've got a, a two-minute response time to Atkins Stadium or, or some of these things, um, I mean, I, I think we just have to look at that and it becomes a dollars and cents thing.
Well, the, so, for example, Atkins Stadium, Elias, Blair Oaks, varsity games must have an ambulance, or they can't actually kick off.
I understand what you're saying.
We can charge them.
Right.
And we do, do we charge them?
Yes.
I don't remember what it was, we charged them.
Uh, it's a set fee. It's a, it's a, it's in a charge master. It's a hundred and twenty-five dollars, I think, a flat.
But we, you know, we talked about this before and, and that's for a varsity game. And then, so, I don't really understand that Misha rule because if that was a rule, there wouldn't be any Misha events going on without that. You know, junior varsity, freshman.
They don't have it for those, go figure.
So, I mean, it, it's, it's crazy, so.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I don't know why they do that either, but that's what they do.
I mean, I'm not saying that we don't need to be there, but I'm just saying that we need to, you know, we, we can't keep doing things for free.
But we charge for that.
A hundred and twenty-five dollars is not enough to cover our costs for a three-hour game. And, and the units running the whole time.
Three hours, two paramedics.
And, and the equipment.
You're probably looking at.
Five, six hundred bucks.
Yeah, to be safe.
Maybe we need to raise the fee. Maybe not all at once, but.
Right.
And touching on what you said, we do have a factor of our operation that we are world-pleased. When mutual aid is enacted and other services deplete their resources, they call, we are statutorily obligated to meet that request as long as it does not deplete what we have. So, there are a lot of things that we have to do, we cannot say no. When you call nine-one-one, we cannot say no. When there's a transfer to take grandma back home, there's a lot of things that obligation, we're duly held to that. And the only way to control some of these costs is reduce that. And I can't recommend that because we're statutorily obligated to do that. So, there is a service side of what we do that we have to do. And unfortunately, there is a cost associated with it.
Yeah, we followed one of your ambulances when we were going to Springfield game and it was over in Lake Ozark.
Yeah. We, we transport to West Plains.
That's our Polk County ambulance.
We transfer to Springfield. We do bill for that.
We bill for that and we have a charge master that tells us what they're.
But i- is it covering a hundred percent of that expense? We are, we only get what Medicare gives us, so on and so forth.
So, do we want to do all this? We're getting down in the weeds now. Do we want to do this whenever we actually do a budget discussion so we can keep this rolling? I mean, we, the discussion needs to be had.
I think that's probably a good idea because we're going to, these discussions are a lot more substantive. We're already a half hour behind.
The overtime, can I give that to you now? Is Jeffrey?
I don't have to like it.
I'm not asking you to like it, sir, I just.
Yeah. We need to figure something out.
We got to get.
I don't have the answer for it, Mike. I ain't going to beat you up on it right now.
No, 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 I, I am responsible and, and that's why I'm.
All right, we're going to move on. Michael runs.
Okay.
Michael, come forward.
Hey, Mike, see if you can figure out any savings by having a QRV on hand more and actually mitigating some of the uses of the other one because then we can justify having it there more and as a provider possibly.
I see. Thanks, John.
Thanks, Michael. Good to see you, Mike.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
If you guys want to copy, Michael has a copy or it's right there under the other.
Uh, I'm good here, Mike.
Current family center.
We got it here, thank you, Mike.
Bring her family center.
Yep, there's good items in there. Again, the current list of employees for Michael, the income and expense, all the detail from the beginning of the year till yesterday, what he's spent and what he's brought in. An organization chart may help you visualize his employees and a request, um, from Michael. And then I actually put it in Excel for him.
All right.
So, we'll start with the Excel one.
Shoot.
Before I start, uh, the EMS has done a good job in providing the training, so I've been able to save money in our professional services.
Oh, good.
So, that's worked out well and that's something we've been doing over the last year, so it's worked out well. Um, for this coming year, um, I have three areas that I'm asking for an increase and that is in our equipment services contract. We know that it's going to be about a seven hundred and thirty-six dollar increase. In our communications, uh, that's phone service and all, around five hundred dollars. And then we were asked to add a new line item of, for postage, for three hundred dollars. So, um, overall, it's about a eighteen hundred dollar increase I'm asking for.
Okay.
Over the current budget, everything else is status quo.
What's the equipment services contract increase for?
Uh, that is for Stanley.
So, that's for the security system?
Yes, the monitoring and all, yes.
Haven't we had a lot of issues with that, Michael?
Uh, that is something we've talked about over the years. Um, it, once things come to an end of a contract, can we?
We're trying to get everybody to the end, the master and bid the whole shooting match.
And we did have a sonatrol, not even sonatrol, a different individual come over there. As far as juvenile's equipment that they're maintaining now is very old equipment.
Mm-hmm.
If we bid that, go out, we will have to buy new equipment for over there. So, that's kind of why we were staying stagnant and not doing anything. I'll tell, ask Michael, we did not pay for that the last time, the court's actually paid for that? Can you give us an estimate on what that equipment cost when you put that equipment in?
I would have to go back and take a look.
We just got a whole bunch of new ones put in, we'll be able to get an idea of what they cost.
There's a lot different. There's is, um, sensor to the room, it's got voice, it's got camera, and it's got alarms per room.
Totally different things.
Yes.
Come October fourteenth this year, that equipment will be twenty years old.
So, so, let's look at equipment service contract specifically. What does that nineteen thousand, seven hundred dollars, what is that for?
Okay, that's for monitoring.
Okay.
That is for, um, for them to come out and service, um, because every so often we're, they're changing our batteries with us.
So, it, it is just for this, this one system, this Stanley system, that's it?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. When's that contract up?
Did you say October or?
No, I said, no, October fourteenth is when that equipment will be twenty years old on that day. Uh, I believe we're into, what, our second year? Uh, it's a three-year contract, three, three.
Well, none of them are over a year.
Year.
Because they, we don't contract for years. So, we can get out of any of them if we need.
Right, it's renewable every year.
So, if Stanley's our problem, then.
I think we need to bid it.
There's a lot of companies out there now. Cause I, I have family at the store.
I mean.
I have a building over in Dunkland, I got rid of Stanley. But Stanley's bought sonatrol, but there's, there's.
We may not be able to do it all right now, so.
And that's fine, but I mean, at twenty thousand dollars a year for maintenance, I mean, you know.
Maintenance and monitoring.
Right. But what, what does the monitoring include?
If the alarm goes off, they'll call police, they'll, they'll call us to make sure that we didn't trip something first and then if not, then it goes directly to.
I would, I would think that if a monitor goes off, that there are systems out there that would directly call the police without any monitoring.
But if it's a door, if a door opens, they will call first.
You might as well call you.
Right.
I got, I got a call in the middle of the night.
Yeah.
People were shooting off fireworks, you know, kicks a, it kicks the microphones in and this one, they called me three times. And I said, it's fourth, I says fireworks. I said, it's, if, unless a door contact's broken, don't call me again.
And those are the items, right, that we spent? So, there's some copy machines in there, there's a fire alarm.
Right.
There's the main alarm and then most of it is sonatrol.
Sonatrol, yes, that's our vehicle.
Well, we can look at it.
Yeah.
I agree, Chris, we can look at, we don't have to.
Yeah, I hate service contracts. I would not buy one ever and I would not buy monitoring either and that's just me. You buy good equipment and you don't need, you don't need a service contract and if it goes bad, you buy new stuff again.
And just for record, so you know, the gentleman who is putting in the camera system isn't looking at our door access because he's a professional, knows what he's doing with that kind of stuff, so I think he's going to be giving us maybe a different kind of solution.
That's what we had to figure out though was, can he hook that up without having to switch out all the equipment? Cause that's where it gets so costly.
Yeah.
So, when you have him looking at everything.
As old as his equipment, I just want you to be aware, we will have to purchase new equipment.
I'm okay with that.
Let's get it on the radar.
Twenty thousand dollars a year buys quite a bit of equipment.
I agree. Also, I have a capital improvements, um, request, um, but before I talk about that, last year I had a capital improvements request I came for a shed, it was twenty-eight hundred dollars. You asked me to go back and see if there's an alternative we could take a look at. Uh, I had found an alternative for a thousand eighty, uh, and that is using, uh, the drug court, uh, people that are carpenters, they would actually assemble the building. It's a pre-made, um, material, I can get it from Menards for a thousand eighty and they would actually put it together for us.
Works for me.
Can we, uh, that all sounds good? And who's going to put it together?
Uh, it's the, uh, it's the folks that are doing community service through the drug court program, they're carpenters.
My, my only concern, my only concern here is, and I, I like the idea, is that if one of, what happens if one of those guys gets hurt and runs a, a skill saw or shoots a nail gun or something through their toe or?
Pre-cut stuff and is just assembling it?
I realize that, but accidents happen and this, I mean.
I don't know how it works with the community service.
I mean.
All honesty, I don't know, they do all sorts of stuff.
They're volunteering, so they cut their arm.
Right, it's part of their, um, uh, community service activity.
Yeah, I just got to ask the question, I mean, cause, I mean, if, if we have a work comp, I mean, if they're on our property doing the work and they get hurt, it goes on our work comp. And so.
If they're volunteering.
We probably need to talk to the court about how that works.
Okay.
I, I mean, it's a great idea and I like it, Michael, I mean, any, anytime we can save some money, but.
Well, the deal with that though is it doesn't matter who you have over there, somebody could get hurt, so.
Uh, I, I would guess it's the same when Greg's using guys out here for community service too, or they're painting on a ladder or whatever. I mean, I mean, it's, it's great that they're doing community service and they're.
I don't think they can operate a tool though whenever they're doing community service. I don't think they can use a power tool, that there's going to be certain things that they can't, can't do, that they're just going to be limited.
But there would be one thing, um, and I didn't talk to our maintenance director, but I would need maybe one person from there to just oversee that activity.
Well, they can work on it while they're overseeing it. It's like the guys walking on the road picking up trash.
Using the power tool, someone for maintenance.
Yeah. I mean, we can get the darn thing put together.
It's, it's assembling.
Yeah, and I, and I under, I understand that, but I mean, you can, you can run a screw through a finger too, so, I mean, it's.
I use, I'm a warden for these teenagers who've got tickets and Brian Stunkie sent them to me and I asked him that and he said they're covered under the city, so.
Okay. I mean, if they're covered under the court, then I mean, I'm okay with it, like, great idea, I mean, you know, anytime we can save money, I, I'm for it, I just.
It was about, it was about an eighteen hundred dollar savings.
Yeah, got to ask the question, so. They're a pretty good shed, I mean, it's going to last.
wood, asphalt, every, matter of fact, and it's going to be two feet longer than what I was requesting was an eight by ten, this is twelve by ten.
Yeah, okay.
So, that is his capital, I've added that to our request for later for you guys to approve or not.
That's all you got for capital?
Yes.
Michael, can you think of anything else in your budget?
No, that's it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I kept everything, one of the things I've, I've always prided myself on, keeping it to the bare bone, um, and, uh.
Okay.
Oh, we used to beat you up pretty good, so, we got you trained.
I did want to ask one question, how is the search going?
Hit me there.
Question was coming up.
How is the search going for the new, the replacement?
I keep putting it out and I get, I be, that's for my, um, dual officer and I don't get, uh, folks coming back that are qualified, uh, just to, okay, I can talk now.
You're still recorded.
We're all recording, so it's all public. If you've got something, it's got to be closed.
It was, it was, it's regarding personnel.
If it's a name, it's got to be closed.
It's not a name, it's the process that I'm going through.
Okay.
In order to try to fill a position. There are several folks that are in the process of retiring, that would be a perfect fit for that dual officer, but it's six or seven months out before that it actually take place. As we are waiting, we're still saving money because I'm getting money coming in from, for that particular position and I'm only taking a fraction of it in order to, uh, do what we're doing at this point. So, we're ahead of the game at this point.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to say.
That's where we're at right now.
Works for me.
You guys have any questions?
If we get rid of that Sharon Bates character, we can save some money, so.
Oh, no, not this week.
Just, just let her know that I said that, so.
And thank you, Mike, for coming downtown for Thursday Night Live.
And that's all volunteer too.
I know, thank you.
All right, well.
Okay.
Run.
Yep.
I agree, run, you know that.
And under Christie's again, you'll see the organization chart, which I think we're going to make a couple of changes on. Um, the income and expense for the whole year.
What'd you say, Debbie?
Oh, under the health department.
Yeah.
I have the org chart out there.
Okay.
The income and expense for the whole year so far, the current list of employees and The income and expense for the whole year so far, the current list of employees and what they make. And I don't know, were you gonna start with the message one or with your big word document?
Yeah, the column.
So where to start with this one, I think. The word document at the very top, that one, yes.
Hit the high points.
Okay.
Don't have to get in the weeds.
You're gonna have to wait a minute.
Forgive me, because this is the first time I've done this particular part of the process, so I didn't know there was to be a cover letter, and I did include.
So basically, what we need to do is you just kinda hit changes that are material sort. I mean.
Okay.
You know, if, if a contract is changed, usually those grants and those contracts don't make a big difference because it's in-out money. So unless one of them really changes, like something big disappears, or some contract gets dramatically increased.
Okay.
And the same for expenditures, by and large, you know, if there's a real substantive issue, like, you know, for example, your vehicles. That's something big.
Okay.
Pay raises, we don't talk about unless it's for specific positions, because the overall pay raise we do is a separate discussion.
Okay. Well, I did include that because I didn't know that, and I did ask for some specific, specific pay raises for four people, which is the last page of that, and I did title it confidential. But as far as my revenue, I've changed a few little ones, like cancer control and wise woman and childcare, just to reflect the new amount. And I added, we added a new revenue line for that dental program.
Okay.
That started yesterday. So expenditures, we just talked about the raise thing. Part-time, it's gonna be a surplus this year because our, one of our part-time persons is gonna have maternity leave, so she's not gonna use all our money, so. But next year should be better. Vehicles, we are requesting that two of the vehicles be replaced this next year because they are approaching eighty thousand miles, and they are nickel and diamondous with repairs. Vax care, the immunizations line, it's still fairly new, so I just don't wanna adjust that line yet. We might not spend all our money, we seem to be taking in more revenue because of it, but we just don't know yet. And I wanna leave it there, because if we have extra, I think we're gonna need to replace one of the vaccine refrigerators because it's gone out of temperature a, a few times, and we're really watching it closely. That's really my highlights. I will have to say that Greg Camp, Greg White, and I had a very good discussion the other day about security for our building. I didn't include any of those costs, because I didn't know if Greg Camp would put those in his budget, and I don't have the cost yet. Sheriff White was talking about tying us into their system, because they have the ability to make the fobs, and we might be able to get discount if we tie into their system.
I'm totally lost, so, yeah.
I'm sorry.
I was listening to you, it's all right.
I was just kinda running down my comments.
Trying to get my computer to work here. No, you're, you're good.
Everybody's having computer issues?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
I'm rolling good, I followed you the whole way.
So why, so I was listening, so anyway, why two new vehicles?
The two Ford Escapes were bought at the same time, they're both two thousand sevens.
When we added, so we added one position, is that right, Debbie? Is that when we added Mike? Was that before we added Mike?
So.
It was Carl, it was before.
Yeah.
Okay, it was Carl and Dave?
Yeah.
And it seems like as one thing goes out in one, two months later it goes out in the other. So they're both having issues, and I did request for one of them to replace, be replaced with a truck, because we have a plethora of equipment over at EMS that if we had to do pods, vaccine pods or something like that, we would need to haul it, and it's not gonna fit in an escape.
Okay, but emergency management has trucks sitting there that we could, that they could use, could they not?
I guess it depends on the disaster.
I mean, it's, we got trucks, trailers, got.
We got trucks, I know that.
Yep. So just a, just a quick question on that, I mean, is there, it seems like we, we look at all these departments separately, and, and I'm just wondering if, if we couldn't maybe, if the sheriff buys some vehicles, if we couldn't maybe let them run them for two years, and then maybe bring them into, or the health, and let them use them for their life and that way that, I mean, not trying to give you old stuff, but anyway, just maybe looking at it differently than everybody's, I need two vehicles and trying to rotate some of these vehicles in and out.
I think there's merit to looking at a fleet.
Mm-hmm.
The whole, all the vehicles we have in the county as a fleet, as opposed to, like you said, two here, two here, two here, six here, nine there.
Because I, I know the sheriff's getting some, what are those, those little crossover SUVs, those Ford?
Those are Explorers.
Explorers, yeah. And so.
That's what the place is going for.
Yeah. And so, you know, maybe, you know, I understand your, but maybe if we're buying several of those, we'd probably get a better deal, I don't know. And if, if they would work for, for both him and.
We'd have to pay those funds back, we'd have to keep those funds separated.
So like those Explorers, we pay a premium for, because they're special law enforcement dish, you don't need that.
Right.
But did you guys get that car?
No, because we decided we would rather get four-wheel drives, because they go out on sewage complaints, 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 things like that.
When they look at saying, okay, it's time to get rid of the Tahoe, or it's time to get rid of it.
Right, truck.
Then maybe that's the point where we can start implementing that, because it's a good way to.
More than likely, they're gonna have, now with these new lease options, you know, those are out of the secret gang that most of them, they run until their mileage is very high. But maybe because they got into this lease program, we won't.
Well, those are just pickups in the lease program.
Well, and I guess, I guess the thing is, is that, you know, if we look at running them fifty thousand miles, and then, and then letting health or juvenile or somebody else using them, or even Public Works use them, you know, it's, it's not like, I mean, yeah, are they running the vehicles hard? Yeah, but I don't know, I agree with Mark, it's just, it's just a fleet, you know, it's looking at it.
Or the Escape's not that big a SUV.
Right.
I mean, do you need a bigger SUV, or can you, can you do like a RAV four?
Yeah, something like that's fine, we just.
I mean, as far as the cost, Explorers are.
Right, and I was just asking to replace with a like vehicle for the one Escape and the truck for the other. Yeah, we don't need a big Explorer typically.
I don't know, I hate new cars.
I'm the opposite, I hate used cars.
I love getting a new car.
Yeah. They just cost way too much.
Yeah, but I take the warranty for the five years and go to the bank on it, man.
Drive it off the lot, drops twenty grand.
Yeah, but if you're gonna use it for, for ten years, you don't worry about that twenty grand drop.
But you don't take new vehicles where I go. Oh, wait.
I don't take a lot, I don't do, I don't take a lot of stuff where you go, and I don't even wanna know where you go most of the time.
You go on a road trip sometime.
No, we definitely do not need to do that.
Do you have any capital requests?
Just the vehicles and perhaps a refrigerator, if that one.
A refrigerator?
If it dies.
What, you just got a new one?
Yeah, I thought that was brand new. In the kitchen?
No, I need one for vaccines.
Oh.
Vaccine refrigerator.
That's important.
Yeah, right.
That's important, don't wait till that dies. If you're having any issues with it at all, get it done now.
It's not one of the Helmers, it's the other ones, it's the other one that's in the walk-in clinic, and we're watching it.
So do you have backup power for that refrigerator if the power goes out?
Yeah, we have generator, and we have an alarm system.
Okay.
That's what the alarm system does now, is the panic alarms and the refrigerators.
Good. All right.
Okay.
So yeah, they call Jesse first. And our backup system is if like, we would lose power and the generator would lose, and, or our refrigerators would totally die, we have an agreement with Saint Mary's that we would take our vaccine there.
Okay.
We need to, when we get into actual budget discussions, Debbie, we need to put a note to have a closed session. For health department.
You're in trouble.
I think you wanna talk about the, these four positions, and, and since there are people filling those positions, and you wanna talk about them by name, we need to do that in a closed session. Okay?
Okay.
You anything else?
No.
Woo-hoo!
And I would like to, Melissa couldn't be here today, she had something else to say.
Okay, so we'll worry, we'll move on.
Can I ask Dale to take Melissa's spot?
I was figuring we were gonna do Dale anyway, do it.
All right.
You have exactly fifteen minutes. No, I take that back, you have one minute.
That's what he asked question.
Basically, I did, on the main budget, I just brought every number over from fourteen, so there's really nothing new and drastic going on there. What we're running to in on maintenance is the fact we're in transition on so many different things that we can't completely get rid of something because we aren't totally on to something new yet. So we're still carrying four hundred, AS four hundred maintenance and all that, that it, that entails over, because until the finance package that BSNA gets implemented, we gotta keep it.
Hey, this is your favorite maintenance.
Yeah, it's, but fortunately, it's going down in price and not going up. We added a couple more of our bigger servers, we're doing extended warrant, or extended maintenance year at a time on those. They're about six hundred dollars a year, give or take a little bit. That's, we have hard drives fail and stuff like that, so it does come into play.
I don't know if you guys noticed, that's the second tab on his budget. The first tab is the sheet one, and the second tab is maintenance costs.
Okay.
And he's going through all that.
And, and the maintenance cost, that has all of our telephone, VoIP stuff. And basically, anything we pay on an annual maintenance should be pretty much on this budget. And like I said, we are transitioning, so we're actually double dipping some things, because we're still paying New World, even though we're hopefully, that'll be the end of it, but I don't know if we'll get a rebate or anything, but we'll have to pay it. I mean, we can't, not have.
I hate this maintenance stuff.
But it's expensive. I mean, New World's really expensive, so.
I don't know, DoveNet's pretty darn expensive.
Well, for a one department user.
For not getting much anything.
Yeah.
We're a multi-department user.
Well, Intrinsicord, I mean, that's expensive too, but it's actually a subscription, so you're actually kind of paying, paying a lease fee plus a maintenance fee together, so.
We do take that one out of the assessor's budget, and the ones that correlate to different funds, we take those. But it's just easier if Dale knows where they're at.
Yeah, yeah, I just take it out of Dale's, so. And basically, I mean, that's, that's the gist of the maintenance. And then the, the new requests, I actually.
It's a new tab there.
Got the last page, I got responses from the departments I basically buy for. And everything, but maybe, I think the assessor asked for machines that, two machines that were not replacement machines, but everything else here is basically replacing an old machine of some flavor. The assessor, we did not replace all their XP two thousand eight machines, so I wanted to go ahead and, even though he didn't ask for all of them, I put some on here to get rid of them.
We need to get out of that.
Yeah, we're trying to get rid of, I think we're just about, the sheriff, we're transitioning, the MDT's are a big problem, but we're transitioning to Windows seven on those. They're, they're not part of my budget, but I'm just saying, we're getting rid of the XP that way. The biggest numbers here, and you'll see the big numbers, our current exchange server, email server, we're running two thousand seven. Exchange is, I think, up to twenty fifteen now, but we're looking at doing twenty thirteen exchange to get up to snuff, so there entails a new server.
Four hundred and twenty-five licenses?
Yeah, we actually, right now, until about a month ago, we were actually exceeding that. So I've been having.
Where? We don't have any employees.
But that's what happens, I don't get told people are gone, and we keep adding people, and I had to add a, give them a mailbox. So I got it down to around four-ten is where it's at.
We don't have any employees.
But you got all reserve, reserve.
We got three seventy-five, something like that.
But you got all the reserved deputies, a lot of it is part-timers, all the EMS.
I'm not counting those.
All the EMS people have mailboxes, and these people you never see or anything. So it, and that's where it's a lot of money.
That's the biggest cost right there.
Yeah, and the server cals, when you upgrade the server itself, you have to buy a corresponding user license for it. And Rich has bought several for, you know, like Public Works and groups he deals with have bought their own, so that's the reason I'm only putting two hundred down here. That should cover everything that isn't covered elsewhere. Old, old printers, I mean, or health, they got printers that sound like meat grinders, I mean, they're horrible, I don't know. It just finally is, you know, there, there are enough aggravation to get rid of them.
Are these all desktop printers, or?
Pretty much, I mean, they're, we're buying a standard HP black and white, like Debbie has, and they have out here the thirty fifteen, they're, they're like four hundred and, or almost five hundred dollars, then we add a drawer on some places, some places just use one drawer. And then the color printers are actually less expensive, but they're not as fast, but they, most people, they're a lesser used printer, but they still have.
Right, and the toner and stuff ends up costing you a lot more, but I was just wondering if there was a way to do more of a, a large-scale printer, where we, everybody would print to one?
Yeah, well, I mean, I could, I could honestly say yes, but would anybody like it? And I would get nothing but complaints continually, because it's the, you know, there's very, very few centralized places that people are going to go print one page and go run across the building to do something. So, I, I mean, if it's dictated that that's what they do, we could certainly do, we can make that happen.
Man, I don't have a printer in my office.
I would be here in grief all the time.
Jeff don't have a printer in his office, Mark don't have a printer in his office, so, you gotta get your butt up and go get the documents, so.
So where's, where are all the printers at you're talking about? I lost track.
Well, the, to see, Kristen wants a second printer for the auditor's office.
No.
A second printer? You print that much stuff?
We do for New World's as hard as a report, so when you're running.
Paperless, paperless.
Even if you're running envelopes, someone else can't print, because it'll come out on an envelope. So if you go to print something at the same time, and they're running envelopes, the, the report will come out on an envelope.
That would be bad, that'd be a waste of envelopes, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Well, I could personally get a prosecutor's printer.
Nah, you don't wanna do that, you don't wanna do that.
I don't think that's an option. I mean, there's, no one else I can share with.
But, it's like Bill's requested a, a color printer, they don't have a color printer up front in, in the EMS. I'll say EMS, I don't know, EMS and ambulance being different, but the EMS office where Bill sits, they don't have any color.
But they have, they have a copier there though, don't they?
They have a black and white copier.
Just a black and white copier?
And that's used by Jennifer and everybody.
Yeah, they will have a centralized one for everybody.
Well, assume that's what you're talking about here is a centralized one, you're not talking about one for you.
No, no.
Is then Mike will want one, then Jennifer will want one, whatever, okay.
See, that, that's your.
Well, and that's, I mean, I guess my thing is, is that we have a copier, and most of these copiers have print capabilities, and why we can't network into that.
Because we got an old one, and it doesn't have.
But it's black and white, that's the deal on that. And, and they do use it, I mean, everybody uses one, that's a centralized function. Health is the same way, the color and the black and white we're replacing is a centralized, it sits outside of Christie's office, but everybody uses it. So, I mean, there's a, there's the odd.
What drives me nuts is the ones that everybody has one on their desk. Ie the courts.
That's over there.
Ie the courts. Everyone has to have a printer.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I, I got rid of color printers. I mean, you want some color, I go to Kinko's, so, I mean.
I don't know.
You know why? Because color toner is expensive, it's, it's crazy.
Yeah, but I, I, having a color printer is, I could not, cannot operate without one nowadays. There's so much stuff that you have to print out in color now, unlike even just a couple of years ago, where black and white was so dominant. Now color's become so prevalent.
Well, I mean, and if you looked at like getting a color copier, then you're talking, well, obviously you wouldn't buy one, you had to lease it, but it'd be massive as far as the expense, but, I mean, most people that I've heard's got them, they shut the color.
This is all stuff to take up when we go to the secondary.
Yes, that's in the cap, yes.
Your minute's over.
The, only thing I got on this is that, I mean, a lot of these things are new, and I know we need, need these, but, I mean, is that, is this fifty-three thousand, is that kind of a normal number, that we'll have to replace stuff on a yearly basis, or say fifty thousand dollars, or?
We, we, several years ago, in two thousand eight, we replaced all the PCs in the county.
Right.
And we were gonna go to a three-year deal, well, we run into money issues, and, and that never happened. So then we run into the XP deal, so as of right now, we've actually upgraded all the PCs again between last year and this year. So we're down to our last couple of two thousand eight machines, which is basically assessors. Normally, you should get on like a three or four-year cycle, because, you know, machines start wearing out. We buy all these with the three-year, they come with, from WWT, that's the state contract, they all have three-year warranties, and that's a good time to start looking at them. But we've run ours six years or whatever. There's no real reason to get rid of a machine, just because, you know, if it keeps running, it's running. I mean, there's no reason to change it, if it doesn't die.
But I mean, you kinda need some type of replacement system, so that you don't end up replacing all of them at once.
Right. I mean, some years it's pretty lame, I mean, some years you got ten thousand dollars, and some years you've got a bunch. But this, as far as machines, is not a big budget, we don't have a lot of machines on here. These printers, I mean, I got a printer in my office, it's nineteen ninety-nine, you know, and it, it's limping along.
Probably the better ones.
Yeah, well, I made it with real parts in there, but.
A little metal in it.
Oh, but I do have one question for you guys. Audit findings, off-site tape storage?
Yes.
I would, my proposal, and this is just my proposal, is that we actually, this new area at EMS that they're putting the rack and stuff in, I would recommend we just put a cabinet of some flavor in there and move the tapes to there.
Like, we, we came up with, I thought, one of our options was, Health is coming over here, because they bring their back.
They don't have a good place to, they don't, I mean, their tapes right now are in a storage room on the floor.
Which is fine, because we're changing them every day, or every couple of days.
But we don't, we change ours every week.
But we don't expect to have a firebombing in every one of our buildings.
But my deal is I take the EMS place as a cleaner place to store stuff. Public Works is horrible, I mean, it's just.
Yeah, Public Works, I agree, but I thought we were talking about doing it at Health, because they were coming and swapping.
Well, they don't, I mean, honestly, I mean, I know where they store their tape, and they don't have a place to store what they've got.
Is it just a matter of getting a cabinet in both places, or?
Well, I mean, it's whoever's building it is, where they wanna put it, but I, you know, this room that, and I'm speaking for myself and not Mike, but this room has got a rack in it.
Right.
And that's it, right now.
That's, I don't make a problem with that, but then.
And there's twenty-four, I mean, there's twenty-four, seven people.
And, and then you have to bring their tape over here.
And that's what's kinda nice, twenty-four, seven, if something goes down.
You have to bring their tape over here then. I'm fine with that.
Well, I mean, I think Debbie, doesn't Debbie come over every day?
She does.
Debbie Backus comes over every day.
Okay, so somebody's going back and forth every day?
I'm good with it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Good.
But, I mean, do we wanna invest in a fireproof thing, or we just wanna file cabinet? I mean, I don't know what the, how far we wanna take.
So who's, is somebody bringing their tapes here?
Yeah. Yeah, Debbie brings hers, Debbie Backus does, and Health brings theirs here.
So do we have a cabinet here?
It's evolved, yeah.
I don't know that there's a need for a special fireproof cabinet, because the theory is, I mean, the actual theory is you should be able to stick it in your bag and take it home at night, and that should be sufficient.
Well, I mean.
I mean theoretically, because the only way you need a fireproof cabinet is if you have a fire at both locations.
Well, that's what we got hit on though, was the fact that we didn't have, it wasn't fireproofing its adjoining. Well, that's what we got hit on though, was the fact that we didn't have, it wasn't fireproofing, it's adjoining.
Well, I think the problem's the adjoining, one fire takes the whole complex out, two miles away.
I mean, are we talking about a cabinet that'll hold one tape?
No, and I mean, that's the que, the question, I mean, I've did different sizes, and it goes.
Cause I mean, a little, a little safe this big is gonna hold several tapes.
Right, and exactly right, and we, we, we need to hold about thirty, a minimum of probably thirty tapes. And it's gonna be, it's, right, but I'm just, I mean, we wanna do it now.
Find out what the cost is, put it, let's bring it up when we do the other, but.
Go look out there, have help.
Well, I know that they're about between two and five thousand dollars, depending on size, for fireproof.
You got anything else?
No.
All right, we're gonna take a quick break.
I'm sorry, I just, we get down in the weeds on that.
We go in the weeds really fast, yeah.
Well, I just wanted to know if we wanted to put it on the budget or do it now, is basically.
I didn't, I don't mean to be short with you, it's like, we're getting down in the weeds, let's go to the other.
Well, if we need it on the budget, I'll put it on the budget, if we don't, I'll do it now.
For that small amount, I just need to do it now, but we need to have it separately from now.
Well, I'll talk to Mike.
This is not a discussion for right now.
Talk to Mike, see if he can put it in there, and then, if it goes over twenty-five hundred, let me know, otherwise.
It's a big room.
All righty, I could give us some coffee.
Coffee or anything, Sam? We got more coffee?
Oh, my friend's hot.
They're all here.
We're all victims.
My friend's hot, I gotta have coffee.
Well, I gave him mine, and I'm just calling in on mine, on mine from home, so. He said, well, there was a big, we should go over here, cause it's a wrap. Who's next?
Eric, come do a blowbell.
Huh? Oh. We're gonna do that right now?
Hmm?
Eric's stuff right now?
It won't take very long.
Hi, John here?
Yeah, let's do it.
And Larry.
We feel like standing on yours.
No, it was good, it was last night, we had a little. Wasn't, wasn't, wasn't that big.
My leg feels better, yeah.
I didn't feel like having one in college.
I think just that.
No difference.
I don't know, really.
And she's too young, it really, she.
Yeah, well, it's, before I was humble.
You're better on your feet, it, it hurts a lot less when you're bending, and it does sit.
Sitting, yeah, sometimes.
Probably better go back over to work, so I got a two o'clock meeting, and then today is Cap Region's board meeting, and I'm at the war two, and we're gonna go over and.
You are.
Side at four o'clock, so, I'm like.
Busy day.
I wanna see your guys with this. You put this around the seatbelt, and they're being from. And you'll know if they got it on.
We're gonna run out before we get to my vehicle. Yeah, you're doing soccer.
It's the new style. You put this on your seatbelts and on your trucks, that way you can just see that your boys got their seatbelts on.
I have some tape that's hard on, it's just a story.
Now you better see the law, or it's not.
You're gonna run out before you head to my vehicle.
And I want you blind in the police officer. I don't think those are kinda dull, compared to some of them. This looks like ones that have been washed, or so.
Uh-oh, Ross's turn.
What kinda snake was that last night?
I didn't get close enough to see, it was dark. I'm like, it does look like a crack in the road, I thought, that's a funny little tick.
Were you actually jogging?
Oh, some, snake, so I'm sitting right across the Mid-American Bank, and it's getting fairly dark.
You're not going on anything?
Get her!
All right.
You're gonna make us sit through.
It's like a two-foot low carb.
Yep.
Hey, uh, that was Willow B, or whatever, out there, off of Old Bloman, or doing a bunch of pipeline work.
Skip, step, drag, skip, step, drag.
I wasn't that bad.
Yeah, you know that, that, all those, that equipment and stuff that was out there, yeah. They're out of Texas, they're out of Texas or something, doing some pipeline for.
I seen a snake in my house, the other day, I come walking down driveway, I seen some. Yeah, so they had two, two jobs, Osage County, and then up here around Center Town or something. One was like ten miles, one was like five miles.
Okay, we're gonna go. We're gonna do this, uh, contract award and signature real quick on Vaughn Ford Road, since it's one thing we do need to vote, and you're here?
Yes.
So, go.
We opened bids, um, July eleventh on this project, the Vaughn Ford Low Water Crossing Replacement, it's a federally funded project administered by MoDOT.
It's on our agenda.
Yes, uh, MoDOT has to approve and concur with recommended award before we can award it, which they have, and they, uh, concurred with award to Lehman Construction, the amount of two hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars, eighty-five cents, and, uh, we recommend that the commission award this to Lehman Construction.
And we're not paying any of it, right?
Um, it's an eighty-twenty, uh, but we're using our soft match funds for our twenty, so it won't cost the county any money.
Love the sound of that, don't you?
Mm-hmm.
Guys got any issues, questions?
No, it was an Indian period place.
How many bids did you get?
Three bids, and they were all right, either the, the low was several thousand under estimate, the high was just above the estimate, so.
All pretty tight.
Pretty, the two, the two, um, Doncheneaters and Lehman were really close, uh, Mara was a little bit higher, but still reasonable bids, all of them.
Good.
Anything else? I entertain a motion to, uh, award the bid to Lehman Construction and approve the construction contract to the same.
Second.
Motion second, call roll please.
Mark?
Yes.
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes. Roll, call, vote, contracts, approve, Vaughn Ford, all right, Bill, you're up. Sorry, guys, gotta stick, gotta, I had to get that one done.
Thank you.
Okay.
And Betty, you don't need to stick around unless you wanna designate which one of these two guys is gonna be in charge when I get up and leave at ten forty-five.
We'll be done by then.
Who was in charge last time? Anybody know?
Go ahead, Greg.
Do you get to, do you get to do that, or?
Clark gets to decide.
Fly, 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 fly.
All right.
You're in charge.
I've never been, I don't wanna be, I'm fine with, I'm fine with being an Indian.
Chris can be a Jeep.
Again, under his, I had the actual, um, income and expense for the whole year, and then I got the current list of employee right here.
We're under EMA?
Uh-huh, yes.
What's the change?
Employees, one.
What's the change?
Uh, as far as, uh, the, uh, cost, we're looking at a, a requested increase of fifteen hundred for our hazmat response line, cover a lot of the equipment, as we know, the last few years, that's dwindling, so, uh, commission has put money in there in the last several years to help that, since the federal grants are, are really dwindling. Uh, five hundred dollars in the fifty-three-two-two-five, the equipment service contract.
What for?
Put in, to keep, that's for all the upgrades, uh.
We have a breakdown on that list, probably have that for our next one death meeting.
All the service contracts, the monthly contracts, keep everything on the MDMC basically going, a lot of it. Uh, and that was something that we put in last year, I think the commission saw that was a, as a need, instead of putting in hazmat response, we broke that out to a different category. Uh, requesting five hundred dollars increase in the fifty-three-two-sixty-five, the meeting travel and dues, uh, five hundred dollars. And, uh, fifty-three-two-ninety-nine, uh, just a five hundred dollar increase in vehicle maintenance, uh, fuel, uh, things like that, so that's pretty minimal. I did request in Capital Outlay, uh, under materials, to see about replacing all the tables and chairs in the training room, and not the chairs, it's the tables. If you recall, when we moved out there in two thousand nine, I was able to put that under a state grant, and we was able to get half of all that funds back for all the furniture, tables, and chairs. The problem, if you remember, uh, Mr. Sheffield's predecessor didn't wanna spend a lot of money, the tables are falling apart. Uh, you sit behind them, and if you lean on them too hard, they fold up and fall on the floor. Uh, they just will not hold, uh, a lot of the stuff, we had a CPR class there six months ago, and as they're doing compressions, one person doing compressions on the table, the table collapsed. So it wasn't a very high-grade table, I think you all recall, uh, we did, uh, you did approve the upgrade in the chairs, which was a ten-year warning on the chair, and it's a very cheap chair, we went to a better chair, and they're, they're in good shape. I'm, I'm not for sure on that price, I'm probably way over, uh, that, but if we can put that in, I can put that on my state grant next year, and hopefully we'll get half of that money back again. The only other line item I put into the request, and it's a few months ago, when Chief Rackers came to the commission and talked about, uh, the deal with the Camden County hazmat. Uh, up in the revenue, I requested, and this is not set in stone yet, but Camden County Commission is talking about putting five thousand dollars to Cole County, that would cover any expenses for their equipment upgrades. So if we put that in, and they're still working on it, so I just wanted to let you all know that if that comes.